I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board Meeting, November 9th, 2017. The order at 6 o'clock PM. And ask Clerk Ziminski for roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo is absent tonight. Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
And if everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I want to welcome everyone. This is kind of an exciting night. We're going to recognize some individuals and we're also going to unveil year two of our portrait. But right now, we're going to go to open forum. And our new deputy chief, who's just sworn in, was given this responsibility. Is there anybody here for open forum?
I've received a request.
Okay. Unless, if you have an item that's not on the agenda, that's what open forum's for. Seeing none, I'll close open forum. We're going to change the order. We're going to take our board reports from the trustees and move that after the first two agenda items of new business. So that'll, we'll come back to that. Does any trustee have any items they want removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd have Manager May read.
This evening on the consent agenda, first item is village board minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held October 26, 2017. Next is finance ordinance number 14, in the amount of $1,204,428.97. Next, we have purchase orders, four purchase orders. First one being West Central Municipal Conference, $95,062. Represents 336 trees under the fall tree planting program. Second is L&amp;R Construction, $74,388. You already approved change order number one for the North Warwick Stormwater Improvements. This is the purchase order encumbering that amount. Next is ESI Consultants, $34,383. This is for also a change order, but it's, the project is 6101 South Cass, which was the old Clark Gas Station. This is the Phase Two Engineering Design for Stormwater Management at that location. Last is Napleton Fleet Incorporated, $25,789. And this is for a replacement of one police vehicle. The total of those purchase orders is $229,622. Brings the total of purchase orders and finance ordinance number 14 together to $1,434,050.97. And that completes the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second.
Nero. Motion made in second. On the question. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Motion passes. We're going to go on to new business and we're going to start with B. Kind of exciting that our 96th anniversary celebration gearing up for the 100th. Westmont was incorporated on November 10th, 1921. And because of that, we did it last year at our November, 1st November meeting. I'm going to ask Director McIntyre to come up to the podium and give a little background also. This is kind of exciting. We get to unveil year two.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and Village Board. As you all know, we're on, at this point, we're on a four-year countdown to the year 2021, which is our 100th anniversary. And so this year, we're celebrating our 96th anniversary. And just as we did last year, we began a five-part mural series in which each mural will be unveiled every year, counting down to 2021. And each mural will depict a different era of Westmont's history. And so tonight, we're going to unveil the mural, which will represent the 1920s, 30s, and 40s. And local artist, Westmont artist Fanny Moye, was asked to do all the murals. Last year, she did such a great job on the first one that our committee decided we needed to have her do all of them. So thank you for doing that work again. And so I think would like to invite Bruce, Trustee Barker, who is instrumental in making sure all this happens. And then Mayor Gunther is also the chair of our 100th anniversary. And come up with Fanny and we'll go ahead and unveil that, if that's all right.
And the pictures around are all from?
Absolutely. As you see here on the walls, there's some new photos. And they're on the walls here, they're on the walls out in the lobby, and then also downstairs. These are all new photos that will, that do represent the 20s, 30s, and 40s of Westmont. And so we invite everyone to come in and take a look at that. And if Fanny can come up, I'm going to get a picture of this. And if it's all right, I'd like to have Fanny come to the podium and maybe talk about the whole process. And Bruce, if you have any comments you'd like to add as well?
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to say that I enjoyed doing it last year and I really enjoyed it this year because it, every object, person, place has a story to tell. And I've had the opportunity to like really study photos, talk to people who know the history of Westmont. And it's just interesting, so interesting that Westmont, this little town, has so many interesting stories, just neat things in history and the world is reflected in, in the town itself. And so these are distinctly Westmont photos and people included in there. And yet, you get a sense of the world and what's been going on in those different decades. Like, you know, the World War II and the honor roll and, and the WPA project where they had the guys come back, or have artists put to work and they built this, this water fountain, which doesn't exist anymore. But it's so large that people could jump in there and they let the people jump in there. There's, there's the first mayor of Westmont. There's the Zephyr, that was one of the more earlier models of the Zephyr. It wasn't as aerodynamic. There was a girls' baseball team. There was a, baseball was a huge part of like entertainment for Westmont. The water tower back in the day, the, the very first policeman was a man who had a motorcycle and said, "I'll be the policeman." And that's one of the, you know, old fire trucks. And, and in order for people to know that there was an emergency and please come and help and fight the fire or whatever emergency it was, there was a red light that went off at the top of the water tower. That green and beige building still exists here across the train tracks. That theater doesn't exist anymore. But, but the movies, I looked up and one was about the war. My husband's here, he actually read it. Something, look at those two movies because they're, they're really interesting to the history of what was going on at the time. And then there was, Westmont had a circus and it didn't last very long, but the Curtis Gregg Circus really did exist and it was that big and they had their tents and they had this really cool like team of dogs that did tricks. So I tried to capture it all. And I'm, I'm kind of concerned about the next few panels because I think it's just going to get even more crowded with stuff to illustrate. But I really enjoyed capturing it for everybody, making it like colorful and trying to engage the kids to really appreciate history and appreciate the history of Westmont.
Trustee Barker?
Yeah, and I'd just like to say that, you know, compliments on another fine piece of art. And, you know, this project couldn't have gone any better in that we've engaged Fanny to do these paintings for the rest of the series there. And when we're done, Westmont is really going to have something that's significant there. And you'll be one of our foremost historians by the time. And I, and really, as we think about it too, to have this on display in the library and not in the room next door where, you know, more residents and more visitors can see it is really, to me, it has worked out perfectly and we're very proud of it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to add on to some of Fanny's explanation of the mural here. The top right corner, that baseball diamond, just for logistics, so people understand where that was at, that was where the parking lot is on Cass and Burlington. And so that's where the baseball diamond was. And as Fanny mentioned, it was, it was the hub of social life in Westmont for many years. And also, it was the only baseball diamond around that had lights. And so it had, you know, activity all the time. The other item is, while the theater's not here anymore, that building in which the theater was housed is still here. And that's where Expressions Dance Studio is today. And so for folks who don't know that. The next item that I want to talk about real quick is we had our essay contest again. And we have some students and an adult who participated. And we're going to have them come up and read their essays on the 20s, 30s, and 40s. So first, I would like to invite up Nora Schleck.
Dear diary, this summer, we moved from Chicago to Westmont after my dad got a new job at Western Electric. My dad drives me to central school each morning in our new Model T on his way to work. I'm lucky to have a ride because it is difficult for farm children to get to school through the rain and snowstorms. My mother met the president of the PTA, Mrs. Mary Peters, and is planning on joining to help, to help fundraise by selling donuts for 10 cents per dozen. I'll write more soon. Nora.
Very nice.
I thought Nora was very creative in the way that she went about it and took on the persona of a student at that time. So that's very cool. Next, I'd like to invite up Ethan.
Westmont, what a great village with a huge history. This area, known as Westmont, was inhabited by the Native American group, known as the Potawatomi, until the year 1833. This great village was incorporated in November 10th, 1921. Around that time, it was viewed as a residential bedroom community that grew around a set of railroad tracks leading to Chicago. Later in that decade and somewhere in the 1930s, Westmont was anointed by some whiskey hall because of the number of taverns and availability of liquor in the probation era in the 1920s to the 1933s.
And then, of course, Pranav and family, always in support of all Westmont activities. So I'd like to invite Pranav and his mom up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Westmont has had a great history with many ups and downs. Our town's incorporation happened in 1921 and Vince Passer was chosen as the first village board president. During prohibition, we have been labeled as Wetmont and Whiskey Hill due to the illegal trade of liquor. Our residents have gotten through the Great Depression by farming the excellent soil with optimism to put food on the table. Our dedicated veterans have fought hard during World War II. Late 1940s started seeing industrial growth. Westmont is continuing to grow by leaps and bounds.
All right. And we have one more.
Good evening. Westmont has a rich and diverse history. After being incorporated in 1921, it has transformed from an agricultural land into a fast-growing residential and business community. In the 1920s, during prohibition, illegal trade of liquor thrived for many years. In 1930s, our resilient citizens survived the Great Depression by continuing to farm and raise animals. Our committed veterans from the Westmont area, including Mr. Marcel Levesque, served in World War II. Post-war, industrial and economic growth picked up gradually. Argonne National Laboratory, which was built in the 1940s, brought many jobs to the area. I wish Westmont to have continued growth and prosperity for years to come. Thank you.
And that concludes what we have for our 96th anniversary celebration. We do have cake and refreshments in the other room in just a moment.
Okay.
But we have other items.
We've got, and for those who may not be aware, and you may already, we're doing these murals, five of them, so every 97, 98. And it's going to conclude with the 100th and they'll all be put together and it'll be displayed. And it'll be a lot of other activities. And every year, Larry's going to put the pictures from that era that, and there's some more in the community room. So please, take, take the opportunity to look at it. Thank everyone for participating in the contest. And now we've got some other people to recognize. We're going to go to the Marker School District 60 Green School Presentation. And the board to receive a presentation from Marker School District 60 and all the environmental efforts of the school and recognize the school for receiving the U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon School Award. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees, and Westmont residents. In addition to what the mayor said, I would like to recognize Keith Bauer and Mary Lottz, who are the true cheerleaders of the ecology group. And I would also like to recognize Sherry DeCarlo and the school principal, Margot Gianoulias, in that the village of Westmont is truly honored to have such dedicated teachers, students, and school administrators to help protect the environment. And we've asked the Environmental Ecology Club to put together a presentation to tell you all their ecology and environmental efforts they've done the last two or three years.
Good evening. And Mr. Mayor and board, thank you for inviting us here today. My name is Keith Bauer and I'm a fifth grade teacher at Marker School. This is Mary Lottz. She is my partner with the ecology group. These are some students from the ecology group, Erica, Shreya, and Joseph. Mrs. Gianoulias, our principal is here, and Mrs. Cooneyhan, our assistant principal is here today too. The Marker Eco, the Marker School was honored with the 2017 Green Ribbon Schools Award. There were only 48 of these awards given in the entire country and two from Illinois. We are here tonight to explain some of the reasons why we were selected to be a Green Ribbon School. This award involves a team effort from the entire staff as well as contributions from the community, of which Westmont, as you'll see, is very, very involved with, in helping us to receive this award. Now, we're going to let the students kind of read while we present a few pictures.
A native garden was established in 2011 with a grant from the Marker Education Foundation. A native butterfly garden was established in 2016.
Solar panels were installed after receiving a grant from the Illinois Clean Energy Foundation. We also received the Navy Sea Purge Grant. Building improvements include LED lights, motion sensors, low-flow toilets, computer and computer controls to adjust temperature efficiency. A little free library was established to help, to allow guests to reuse books.
Marker School participates in the USDA's Healthier U.S. School Challenge. Our full-service kitchen provides hot meals, including fresh fruit and vegetables daily. Student fundraisers include jump rope for heart and PE. Classes focus on exercise and proper nutrition. Pennies for patients, pop tabs for Ronald McDonald House, and giving money for hurricane damages are some of the fundraisers we've done.
Organic waste from students, lunch, and our kitchen goes into our compost bin. Plastic bags are collected and recycled by trucks. Eyeglasses, American flags, and holiday lights are collected and properly distributed.
At the end of the year, unused, unused school supplies are collected and given to students in need for next year. SCAERS helped the Ecology Club perform a waste audit. We discovered that we waste too much food and a goal this year is to educate the students to eliminate food waste.
A very important part of Marker School's success involves the village of Westmont. Many years ago, fifth graders helped to plant plants along Twin Lakes Creek to help prevent erosion. Working with Mary Gabrielle, the Ecology Club collected pumpkins at the farm and Richmond Education Gardens. The village of Westmont, through John Yater, has planted 10 trees over the last three years with the help of our students. Marker Ecology students tag trees in downtown Westmont and write essays for Arbor Day. The village of Westmont has developed native gardens on our parkway.
Every three years, Marker School has a First Score Environmental Education Day. This is an entire day of environmental activities. Students and staff move throughout the entire day to different environmental classes. SCAERS presents most of the activities and classes. Fullersburg Woods educators teach about native plants and John Yater. Village of Westmont forester leaders leads classes in trees and last year, beekeeping.
Through the years, Marker has earned two earth flags, the first water quality flag in DuPage County, and the ecology flag.
To conclude, the dedication of the Marker staff and students, our relationship with SCAERS, with the DuPage County Forest Reserve, Fullersburg Woods, and the village of Westmont have allowed Marker School to be recognized nationally by the U.S. Department of Education as a Green Ribbon School. Thank you.
If you want to, Trustee Barry, if you'd like to present the...
No.
Everybody come on up. Principal John Yater. This was a team effort. It's quite an honor.
Absolutely. Wow.
And if, that's a great honor to have. I know the students, some of the students have to probably go home, but if they don't have to go home, we've got one more item that I think is going to be very rewarding if you stay. And we're going to go back to the reports and we're going to recognize some other young residents or young people in the community. And I'm going to start with Trustee Addington.
Thank you, Mayor. Every year, for the last four years now, the Westmont Lions Club has done what they call a peace poster contest. This is a contest that is international in scope and it's been going on by Lions International for the last 30-plus years. All three schools in Westmont, this is at the junior high level, by the way, all three schools in Westmont participated. All three turned in multiple pieces of art. One was chosen as a winner from each school. And the three winners each received from the Westmont Lions Club a check for $50. And these three posters that we're going to display, and, and some of the young people are here today, we're going to have them talk a little bit about their theme. So why don't we start first with Ken Slazinski? Ken, why don't you come on up to the podium? I think here's... There we go. Put it right there, yeah? Talk a little bit about how you arrived at your theme.
Hello. And so, so this year, I decided that, so to start off, I drew like a world with a peace sign in it and hands holding it, which, that basically means that we can shape and control how we use our, and how we spread the peace around the world. And also, I drew doves because that's the first thing that comes to my mind when I think of peace. And they're all holding flags, which means that we could spread peace throughout all the countries like that. So then, I drew soldiers shaking hands and signing peace so there's no wars. And hopefully, that can happen in the future. And I drew some countries on top of the world, so, just to represent different countries and their landmarks. And finally, I drew kids holding hearts and, holding a heart and flags on it to unite different kids and around the country.
Well done.
Thank you.
And then the next one is Nicole Krista Stoffe. I'm butchering my last name. Is Nicole here? I know we had, we may have had a scheduling problem because of, of a sports program. But we can get, let's get Nicole's poster out. I think that's the next one. And Nicole's theme is "Peace and Love is the Only Way to Bring Our World Together. We Are One." That's the poster that she did. Again, doves, peace signs, a lot of people holding hands, a lot of different people with, you know, chose the diversity in the world. So this was the winner from Westmont Junior High. Our last one is Emily Wang. Is Emily here? There she is. All right. Emily is from Westview Hills Middle School. And I should point out that this good-looking guy sneaking to the front is Josh Vance, who is the art teacher for Westview Hills. Emily, tell us about your poster.
So I drew like a world and underneath the world is like a hand, which represents how like, we, the peace of our society... Like the peace of our society lies in our hands and it's like up to our community to be able to bring our society together. And like on the top, I drew an olive tree and like the olive branch is known for symbolizing peace. And I drew doves on like the corners of the poster. And they carry, one of them carries like an olive, an olive branch, which represents peace. And like around the earth, I put like different symbols of peace, like kind of around the world, I tried. world, I tried. So like, there's a dove, there's a yin yang, and there's like a peace flag, the rainbow flag. There's a paper swan, and there's like the peace sign, the hand. And there's a clock, which represents how like, the hands are in the form of a peace sign. So, it's like, in our, in our future, we will come together as a, as like a world and be able to find peace. And in the background, I drew a lot of different flags from like, all over the world, trying to make it better. And that represents how like, all our nations around the, around the world have to come together to be able to find peace.
Beautiful. Thank you. Barry? These wonderful young people's posters now goes on to the district contest. There are ten districts, Lions districts, in the state of Illinois, and this district has sixty-some clubs. There probably will be about fifteen other entries from around the district, from various schools. Each of those will be looked at. One of them will be chosen as the district winner. And again, the district winner gets a little more money. And then, that moves on to the state competition. There's ten districts, so there'd be ten entries. And if that poster, if one of these posters goes on through the state, then it goes to international. And there are about five hundred winners at the international level. The number-one poster wins five thousand dollars and is invited to the United Nations to talk to the, the Assembly there about his or her poster. So this is a fun contest. The Westmont Club has been glad to do it for the last several years now. And as you can see, a lot of thought and a lot of effort and a lot of time went in to these students doing this. So we thank them, we thank the art teachers for their support, and Emily, how much time did you put in on this, approximately?
A lot.
I think, I think you, I think you mentioned that you thought it was at least fifteen hours or more.
Fifty-one days.
She did a lot. So, again, we thank you all. This now goes on to the district level, and I think Westmont and the Westmont Lions are really happy to continue this program. It promotes these young people. It's only for junior high. It's just at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level. And you are a senior, you're eighth grader?
Yeah.
So she moves on, but some of the other posters you've seen are from sixth and seventh graders, so we can get them to do it one more time. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
If it's all right, we'd like to get a photo with all of the artists. Sophie, come up and hold your artwork, and we'll have the families come up, and Mayor, if you'd come around as well.
While we're taking that picture, we've got a birthday cake in the community room, and everybody's welcome to go in there and have a piece. It's for today's, our ninety-sixth birthday. So we'll take this picture, and then they can adjourn to the community room.
Yeah. They buttered.
Ready, look right here. One, two, three, four, ready? And then, shall we invite your families and the art teacher?
Please?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll have all the families come up. Families come on up.
Get in there. Go ahead, get in there. Go ahead, get in there.
All right, everybody look right here. One more, ready? And we're set.
Congratulations. All right. Again, as Trustee Addington's getting back to his seat, one of the things we've tried to accomplish since I've been mayor is to recognize the outstanding achievements by our youth in the community. This is a great example of their talents and their dedication. So, we are going to move on to reports. We'll finish our reports now. And that's all you get to say, Jim. No, he'll have more. Unfortunately, we, one of our longtime business owners in town, member of the chamber, the Martin family, lost a granddaughter, six weeks old, and I just want to extend our condolences to the entire family. I'm sure the board, every board member feels the same way. So, that's really all I have. So I'll turn back to Trustee Addington in case he has anything else.
I do. Peace posters are done. Just remind everybody that we are now into November, so holidays is just around the corner. And that will start on Sunday, November the nineteenth. We have the craft fair at the Community Center, which is an annual event that goes on every year. And you will see all, I see they were already working at Memorial Park. All the trees will, little Christmas trees will be up, and we'll start decorating them on the nineteenth. And there will be a breakfast buffet that morning that is run by the Lions Club as kind of the kickoff for holidays. That will be in the Ronald Gunther Administrative Building, which is fifty-five East Richmond Street, and it's quite a breakfast with eggs and sausage and pancakes and omelets and a bunch of other stuff. So, everyone is invited to that. And, and then, on the twenty-fifth of November, will be the parade that evening, and that starts at...
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. And that'll be a night parade, and of course, after the parade is over, you can come over to the, to the Westmont Center, and Sanna will be there to talk to the kids and take pictures, if you would like. So that's it on holidays for now. The other, the next thing is talk about economic development, and I guess we'll put the, the good things first. There's been a place under construction for the last couple of months on Cass Avenue called Johnny Blitz's. He is now open, and it's an all-American grill and a sports bar. He specializes in fresh burgers and craft beers. They'll be open from eleven to one, and we, I saw the menu earlier today. It is, he has a lot of specialty burgers, but the big thing is he has a build-your-own. So you, you pick something from each column, and, and that's how you build, that's how you build your hamburger. They're very nice people. I wish them nothing but great success, and if you get a chance, stop in for a nice burger. Second thing is that economic development normally meets on the first Wednesday of the month this time, this, in December, would be on the sixth, and we'll keep everybody informed of what the agenda will be, but that's nine o'clock in the morning, and that will be in the room behind me here. And the third thing on economic development, unfortunately, is to talk about the fact that one of our longstanding members passed away a few days ago, Corinne Beller. When we talk about the mural, and they talked about the circus, Corinne Beller lived on the property where the circus was housed for, for those years. She and her husband owned that property, and she would tell me that every so often, they would do something, there's an old barn, and they'd do something around the barn, and they would dig up another artifact that was, that was there. So, we're going to miss Corinne. She, she was a very, very good member of our committee and very, very valuable in our town. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to piggyback, Trustee Addington's and Mayor Gunther's, we've lost too many in Westmont. On a positive, positive note, we have gained a couple new residents, Anisha Gorilic and Doug Gorilic. Doug's been a longstanding fixture at the Summer Fest, I think is where he's most famous from, but they had twin girls of Leila and Zoe, and they are doing well at home and here in Westmont, so we have a couple new residents that are, that are coming along. So congratulations to the Gorilic family. Obviously, the Environmental Improvement Commission had a, a lot going on, and thank you to Mary Gabriel on her continued work with the children and with the EIC. Before tonight's meeting, Mike Ramsey and the Public Works had a, we had a staff meeting and a committee meeting. Mike had updated us on an exciting new intern program that's going to be going on in conjunction with the high school and the water department. So there'll be more information to come. The water department has also completed its copper and lead testing. A lot of this comes back from Michigan last year with, with their lead crisis. A lot of this testing was mandated, and good news is, is everything came back, we had a lot of great participation from residents. They're also continuing with our water main projects, which I think a lot of us have seen in front of the Park District. That project has come to completion. Jimmy from Streets is also working on the LED lighting to continue. And then, also, the street department has, has ongoing stormwater projects. They've been cleaning the ditches, the culverts, and I think we're already seeing a lot of these effects with our last heavy rain. We did not have nearly the problems that we've had back in two thousand thirteen. So again, thank you to them. Working on new sidewalks on Sixty-first Street from Cumner to Fairview, also on Quincy Street, working on new sidewalks. I see a number conspiracy, or, or a conflict on the two numbers, but John Yater had informed us that three hundred and twenty-five plantings are done. I think the rest of them are, are coming here in the next couple of weeks. And holidays decorations are all up, as a lot of us are noticing in town. And then, finally, and probably one of the most important things we covered today, is we honored a longtime employee, Jimmy Wright, for his thirty years of service and his community service, and also his volunteerism. And I think a lot of us are familiar with him as posting. I know he's involved with Westmont First and, and many other groups, and overall, a great person and a, and a great asset to the village. That's what I have today, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move over to this side, and Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. First off, just again, congrats to Jimmy Wright on the award and accomplishment. Next, we have a Public Safety Committee, December seventh, right here at Village Hall. And just over the weekend, remember, if you see someone that, see a veteran, just thank them for their service, as we all celebrate Veterans' Day, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
And to add to that, eleven-eleven at eleven o'clock Saturday at Ty Warner Park will be a ceremony honoring, honoring those veterans, so everybody's welcome. Trustee.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything tonight. Everybody stole my thunder, so...
Then we'll go to Trustee Barker.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just one thing tonight is, we had made a decision to cancel a Westmont First meeting for November. We will meet again in January. The reason to do that is our next meeting is very important to us, and that we're going to have a focus on the seniors in the community and how the village does and can do better interacting with them. The library is starting some great work with the senior community, and we want to make sure that we get it right also. So we'll meet again on January eighteenth. That is all.
Thank you. And I'm going to go back to Clerk Simmski, since I skipped over her.
That's okay. I, you know, I'm, like all of you, I want to give condolences to the Beller family on the loss of Corinne. She was so dear and deared all of us, and...
Yes.
Big loss, and also to the Rick Martin family on the loss of the grandchild. I want to remind everybody that the village offices are close to the public tomorrow and will be used for staff to have a catch-up day, where they get a lot of work done because they aren't interrupted, so, just so everybody doesn't show up because the doors will be locked. Also, Happy Thanksgiving. You won't see us again before Thanksgiving, so everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving and get set for the holidays, and don't forget the five-k race on Saturday, November twenty-fifth, sponsored by the Westmont Rotary Club, that will kick off at nine o'clock AM, so don't forget to participate.
Thank you. Lot of activities with holidays. Make sure you go on the website and check on it. I, I have one item. Birch Point sent a huge thank you for our cooperation with them on their road situation, where we ended up taking over the road, and how huge was it?
Well, I can hold it up, but it's huge.
Nice.
When I say huge, I mean huge, and it's signed by all their residents, so I wanted to share that with you, and I know Trustee Addington raised his hand.
Forgot one thing. Strategic Plan, we're supposed to meet on the fourteenth. Is that still scheduled?
Yes.
That will be at ten o'clock, and again, we'll meet behind us for Strategic Plan next Tuesday at ten AM here.
Very good. Manager May, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Attorney Zeminek.
Uh, no, nothing.
We'll move on to New Business. C, Electric Supply Agreement. Board to Consider an Ordinance Approving an Electric Supply Agreement for the Purchase of Electricity for Municipal Purposes. And I go to Manager May.
We have, for, I guess I'm, I'm already trying to differentiate this from village-wide community aggregation, but as a, as a municipal or a commercial customer, for our own purposes, for our buildings, for our street lighting and the energy that we use, we do have, we competitively market the energy purchases. We use a consultant to, to broker these prices, and our current contract, although it's with Constellation Energy, which is a ComEd company, it isn't necessarily Commonwealth Edison will always be the distribution portion of the energy, but for the, the energy supplier itself, we competitively market that and its bid. The, our current agreement is up the end of this month, November, and we need to review, renew with a new vendor. Part of, this is bid, and these are bid on daily information, so I don't have an actual number or a recommendation. The action before you today is to authorize myself with the village attorney, who's reviewing the, the potential suppliers and their, the related contracts, but when we actually, when our broker finds, you know, the nice price and believes that that's the best one we're going to get, and we're actually looking at a sixty-month term this time, five years instead of three years, to do this, and it's looking very favorable right now. So he has recommendations for us, but I would need to execute it the same day that the offer's made or they continually expire. So I can't bring a, a contract to you, so I'm looking for permission to process it. I don't know if you wanted to add any?
I just finished reviewing the two contracts we may likely go with. I just sent you my edits, and the ordinance that, the ordinance is to give the village manager authority to execute whatever contracts are the best price for a sixty-year term. That's a little different than the draft ordinance that was circulated yesterday to you.
And this is no different from what we've done in the past, and is his fee from the cost savings?
The cost savings are, he's, he's, his fees for his services are actually paid for in the rate, so he's, he's compensated via the supplier, and so there's no direct cost to us. I'm sure somehow it's built into the, you know, the rate that, you know, is paid, but not directly.
And it is a pretty good savings for a large facilities on electric. I know the Park District's doing it and using the same broker.
Yeah, we have the two different accounts. Like I said, the, there's, think of it as metered and un-metered, so our street lighting, which are, we, we just pay average, dusk to dawn, is one contract. Our buildings and our other uses are another. I, I'll just point out, this does not include any water division. Being a, a, a utility that charges fees, there, those accounts are separated all by themselves.
Do I have a motion?
Ossing to approve, Addington.
Second, Barker.
Mayden, second to approve on the question. Additional questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business, D, Engineering Design Agreement, Commonwealth Edison. Board to Consider an Ordinance Approving an Engineering Design Agreement with Commonwealth Edison for Relocation of Existing Facilities Along East Burlington Avenue. And Manager May.
You're generally familiar with the, the project, with the proposed development opportunities on what we call One North Cass, or the parking lot on the northeast corner of Cass and Burlington. The parking lot itself has both underground high service, very high service, thirty-four-k line running underneath the parking lot, as well as overhead lines that bisect the parking lot as well, to accommodate any reuse of that parcel, and particularly in... To accommodate any reuse of that parcel, and particularly in combination with the adjacent properties, both those lines have to be rerouted around the perimeter of that project and also probably taken across the railroad at a different location. The 34K is a large distribution line and serves a large portion, all of it coming from the substation that's up on Traube. So this is not to do the relocation, this is to, because it's not public right-of-way conflict, it's private development, the, it is the engineering design to figure out what that would entail to get us a firm construction cost. And then even though they'll subcontract it out to a different engineering firm, we're paying, this relationship is with Commonwealth Edison, and we're authorizing them to do this design at our expense. And we would build that cost into our relationship with the developer.
With the TIF contribution. And I do have to say, trustee Nero jumped on the phone. He found out that who the lobbyist is for ComEd, and we're going to set up a meeting with our representative Patty Belik and that lobbyist, along with myself and staff, to look at this whole project and see if there's any way that some of the costs could be absorbed by ComEd. So do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second.
Mr. May, second, I'm on the question.
Just that it's listed as budgeted, but really, there's no number on it, so I guess it's, it's kind of hard to have a budget on it, right?
Is there a guess, is there?
It's an $80,000 engineering services agreement. I think the last time I talked to you, I was talking about entering it as a purchase order this time, but because it's a, an actual agreement, attorney recommended that we process it as a separate agenda item.
So then, being budgeted last year, where does that funding come from?
Well, it's the TIF-related development. So when we say budgeted, you won't see a specific line item that says for ComEd relocation engineering, but the redevelopment opportunities in the TIF district is where this is budgeted as a whole. And where, if we're going to proceed, that's where that would come from.
Okay, thank you.
And if the TIF succeeds, this is a potential cost for infrastructure improvement that I believe the village can get reimbursed for out of TIF funds.
Funds. So additional questions, comments? Roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. New Business, E, Proposed Aggregate Property Tax Levy. Board to Consider a Motion Determining the Proposed Aggregate Tax Levy. And we got director Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is something that the board has talked about multiple times in a couple of different finance committees. This is, as we noted, the first step in the property tax levy process. And as you can see, we have a levy that we're proposing as the aggregate levy in the amount of $8,666,312. That includes the levy for both the library and the village. So we'll have more discussion of this when we have, when we actually adopt the levy in December, but open right now for questions. And assistant library director, Nick Smith, is here for questions, if you have any regarding the library's levy.
Maybe just for clarification, the chance of us getting 4.96 is slim to none. And what realistically, we're looking somewhere between one and a half and two and a half. That's CPI and new growth. But if by some chance it goes up higher, you don't want to lose out on the opportunity to gain that new growth. So it's added in a little cushion to the proposed levy. So.
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second.
Nero. Motion made and second on the question. Library? Nothing? You're just here to answer questions. All right. Okay. I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. The next side.
Let me jump, just for clarification, or at least to let people know what's going on. They're going to, I think the public is going to read a lot in the papers over the next couple of days because of this, of the Senate bill that was passed, but then got put on some kind of a, is now on hold again because apparently the Senate president has, has some way of stymying the legislation from going forward because he's asking for a revote, which he has the power to do. I'm not sure I understand all the nuances of that, but the last thing that I got from mayors and managers was that it passed by a substantial majority. However, this president of the Senate, John Colleton, has put this administrative hold on the thing, which means now nothing is going to happen, because they've adjourned.
Until January.
So now nothing is going to happen according to what everyone is saying from mayors and managers until January, when they reconvene. I'm not sure how all this is going to play out, but the question then becomes, how does this affect that situation for this upcoming year if they don't do anything before January?
Well.
Do we just go forward like we normally do?
The levy will be filed, and from what I understand, the two-year property tax, you're still going to be able to get the new growth.
The new growth should be there, and also anything that has to do with any bonding that we did has to be there.
So no matter what, if they pass this, there'll be a freeze on the property assessed valuation, and we'll still get any new growth and the bond, and it may only be a percent.
I assume that's why they sent us all of our increases last week?
Yeah.
Right before the freeze?
Right.
So additional questions? We already voted.
I would just, throwing that out as a, just, this is the latest information that I've read, is Colleton's now put this, this hold, and then they adjourned.
Yeah. So we'll hear more about that in January.
Yeah.
New Business, F, ERP System. Board to Consider an Ordinance Approving a License and Service Agreement with Tyler Technologies for the Enterprise Research Planning System. And I need a motion, this is going to be postponed to a future meeting, so I need a motion to postpone this item.
Motion to postpone, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made and second to postpone. On the question. Director Parker, you have anything to, to add?
We discussed this a little bit at the prior committee meeting, but just as a recap for everyone and for the public, who may not have been at that committee meeting, we are currently in negotiations with the software provider, and so we're pushing this off to the next meeting till we have a little bit more clarity on some of those items.
Any additional? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business, G, This is the Regular Meeting Schedule Modification. Board to Consider a Motion to amend the regular meeting schedule of the village board, adjusting the November 23rd, 2017, and it says December 21st, 2017, meeting dates. And I think we want to back off to 21st of this.
That's right.
Yes. So the regular meeting dates can be rescheduled to a different evening, or a decision to cancel the meetings can be reached. The first meeting of the new year is January the 4th, 2018. So this motion is only going to be for November 23rd, which is Thanksgiving. We'll leave the, December 21st. You don't want to meet on Thanksgiving? Well, I, it's up to you. But on December 21st, we'll leave that scheduled in case we need to meet for a developer.
And we think we, that's a strong possibility. So I guess it would be kind of nice to know now if anyone is planning on being out of town or otherwise unavailable, or has an objection to the December 21st meeting. Either way, we can take it back up.
No, you're stuck with me.
I thought it was a little overstretched to cancel it anyways.
Yeah.
I mean, we're a little far away.
It's far away from.
It was about Eve or anything.
Yeah. Traditionally, we, because of the proximity to Thanksgiving, and then the second meeting in December is typically closer to Christmas than it is this year, so that was the same thought. You also have the, it doesn't even need to be done in this manner. We can wait up until 48 hours before the meeting and just publish a notice of cancellation. It's just, you know, making it clear tonight, at least with the Thanksgiving one, since it's exactly Thanksgiving.
But we'll have another meeting before that anyway.
Yes, so there's a December.
Maybe we could minimize staff or something at the, at the 21st meeting, if that makes it better.
Actually, we meet on Pearl Harbor Day this year.
December 7th.
Yeah.
We can't cancel that, Jim.
We lay people off on the 21st.
Well, we might as well, because if we, if we're going to meet on this, on November 23rd after I have my turkey dinner, I'll be asleep anyway.
Well, what I'm looking for now is a motion to modify our schedule for November 23rd, 2017, to not have a meeting. That's all I'm looking for now, is a motion.
Motion by Addington to approve.
Second, Nero.
Motion made and second on the question.
I guess one little thing to add is, but you're still authorizing the finance director to process the finance and the payroll and things like that in his absence of a meeting.
I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to miscellaneous, and I'll ask chief, fire chief here, Jim Conley, if he has any update on the Speedway, where that process is right now.
Be a lot of work. Thank you, Mayor. Things are going smoothly. I know Speedway's working closely with building and economic community development on all the new work they're doing. In terms of the remedial work, it is sort of a public safety announcement here that over the next week or so, between now and a week from tomorrow, residents may notice some odors as the tanks are uncovered and earth and stone or things are removed. They're certainly encouraged, if they smell anything in their homes or businesses, to call 911, but if they just smell odors in the air and around Speedway, that may be something that's unpreventable over the next week or so. The goal is for Speedway to have the tanks removed. This is all under the supervision of the state farm marshal and also other interested parties will be out there. There'll be a very thorough investigation. These tanks will be preserved for further investigation. The process will be hopefully expedited, like I say, over the next week or so, but it is a fairly massive process. Approximately 200 tons of earth and stone will be removed. That's a big number. I had asked them to convert that to cubic yards. That's something like 3,500 cubic yards. So that's, that's a lot of dump trucks to take material out, but it's all in the public interest to get anything that's contaminated on the site out of there. They are continuing to maintain all the environmental controls. They are totally isolated from the sanitary sewer. They're totally isolated from the storm sewer. They pump everything off-site that needs to be collected. Just to give you an example, last week, when there was a half-inch rain over last weekend, that resulted in 5,000 gallons of sanitary water and 5,000 gallons of storm water being pumped off-site. And they're prepared to handle that. They have storage tanks and that for it. So seems to be going smoothly. It's a process. Once next week is completed and the tanks and contaminated earth are off-site, then everything from there is, you know, upward and onward and much better than the condition today.
And you may not know the answer to this, but state attorney filed a lawsuit, as well as, I think, the county? And I'm hoping that's only to guarantee that when they get everything right before they open? Are you aware of?
I am aware of it. I've seen both of them, the state attorney general and the DuPage County State's attorney, both filed actions. As I read them, as they were reported, I read them as making sure they do all the right things. I didn't see anything there that precluded them from ever reopening. So they are certainly proceeding under the belief that they will reopen. They're making all kinds of improvements to the site, stormwater, sanitary, the building, the store, so they're certainly operating under the assumption that they will reopen, all new tanks being installed.
And just like whenever something like this happens, they, when they reopen, it's probably the safest station in town.
You would think so. Everything will pretty much be, be new from a controlling of product, the tanks, monitoring, everything will be state-of-the-art, so you would think so. And we, we, along with the state farm marshal, will monitor that investigation and keep on top of it.
Any additional questions?
I just wanted to make a comment. You know, with all the trucks and everything and being on Cass Avenue there, I think we have to take a good look at the safety of the people crossing Cass Avenue back and forth, because they're using that kind of as a parking area and staging area there. I know myself, I was surprised by a couple of guys walking across the street, one in their yellow vest, but he was standing behind the guy that wasn't in his yellow vest. And, you know, it was a rainy night, so that we want to make sure that it's such a busy area with all that complication there that we, you know, have a safe crossing there in some way.
Frogger.
Yeah. Yeah.
Trustee Barker, that's a good point. I did notice when they had a lot of activity like that a week or so ago, they did actually have their own flag people and crossing guards there, so we'll bring that to their attention when there's a high volume, you know, for the one or two we'll have to. I actually have seen them cross at 63rd, which is actually the right place for them to cross.
We just don't want to make the papers again in a bad way.
I'll bring that to their attention. Thank you.
Just no questions?
I have a couple of things. I'd actually like to piggyback right off of what trustee Barker said. With all the activity going on there, it's kind of been brought to my attention, and I'm sure you guys are more aware of it, but I'm a little surprised that we don't have an emergency signal or marking at our station there. I kind of was noticing the other day where the guys have to like, kind of flip the lights on and back in, and the more I've been kind of noticing it in inventorying, it's got to be one of the few on a major thoroughfare like that where you guys don't have some kind of really, you know, pavement marking or, or light or something. And I'm just, I'm glad you're here, or the chief, but I'm glad you came up now, because it was something that's kind of been a question on my mind. Is that a safe situation for you guys?
Well, it's not the safest situation. We try to manage it. It's an excellent point, trustee Barry. It's a subject we've reviewed, and I believe deputy chief Riley has made some more recent inquiries. That is a county highway, so there are some complications of us getting lights and signals, but it is a subject we are reviewing right now to see if we can improve that situation. We'll report back more when we have some more detail.
I can add a little bit to why it's like that, and I, of course, it's a county highway, and I'm speaking for others, but where you do see the hatched-out areas are usually when they're proximate to a traffic signal, so that when there's stopped, queued traffic, you don't want them queued in that zone. There are no signals at this location. It's sufficiently far from the traffic signal at 63rd Street. That would be a reason why it's not marked like that. So what we're talking about here is whether or not there's a need to add a signal for the purposes of preempting traffic during an emergency vehicle, and it's my understanding they, they haven't permitted that in a long time. I mean, just, you know, uniform traffic control. If it was adjacent or connected to another traffic signal nearby, if there was one installed, what's the nearest cross street? 60th, maybe?
Six.
Or 61st?
60th, correct.
Yeah, if one of those two became signalized, then there would be a way to coordinate that zone.
And then, secondly, John, are we, are we somewhat forced to sue Speedway for our reimbursement, or how does that work?
That's under negotiation right now. We've got an ordinance in place that allows for recovery of costs for responding, and then there's some additional extraordinary costs have been incurred. It's my understanding there have been ongoing negotiations, and Speedway's being receptive to making the village whole.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
And we have, we have collected all those for both our community and others, and those have been submitted to Speedway already, and no, no indication they wouldn't be reimbursed. It's a substantial amount of money, and so.
You said 10 departments? Is that what you?
Oh, no. Almost 100.
Wow.
Almost 100 agencies. Last point to your question. One thing we have done to try to minimize the safety risk is we have rearranged some of our vehicles, so while we can't 100% avoid backing in the station, our largest vehicles, we don't have to back in. So there are times when the engine, you will see it, but the ambulance can back in without being in the street, and the truck pulls through. So we're not 100% there, but we're say 60% there. Thank you for the question. there. Thank you for the question. Anything else?
Any additional? I mean, what we saw is a great cooperation amongst all the districts, and to come here, the same thing we assist other communities too, so...
And it wasn't, wasn't just fire. It was Public Works, police, state agencies, county, it was our own, our own staff, all of our departments.
Spencer. Larry, Jenny, everyone.
Jill, Mike, Mike particularly, you know, unsung heroes, they did a lot of work, particularly on the stormwater side, that made a huge difference to our community, so...
And we thank everybody, and especially you, for coordinating all that effort.
Yeah, that was the easiest job. They had to do all the work.
Thank you. This, under miscellaneous, Larry, do you have anything? Jill, we haven't heard from you.
No.
No?
Was it earnest to me?
I'll go to trustees, but I have to say that we, I swore in a deputy chief last meeting, and it just so happens now he's here because the chief decided to give him this responsibility, but welcome. Any other miscellaneous?
I just wanted to get a shout-out to Marie to hurry up and heal with her foot surgery.
Yes.
Get back to...
Get back to us, yes.
To work.
Question for Mr. Forsberg would be, is Italiano open?
They're closed. They're working on, they, I know they still have some things that need to be worked on.
Repeat the answer for him.
So that's another one.
The answer is they're almost open. They're not quite open. There's a few more things that they have to do, but I had the opportunity to go to Johnny Blitz last night, my wife and I, and I'm dying for some Italian, so let's get that place...
There you go.
Good. Thank you.
And I guess since we have such an open forum here this evening, I, I would like to, I guess it's, it's bittersweet, but we, CNC Vacuum, which has been open for, I don't even know, what was their years, and it had to be 40-plus, I would assume?
Forty-plus.
Forty-plus, and they've closed. We're having a change going on there, but it's sad to see them go. They've been a family business, and, you know, her son fixed vacuums. I'm sure we've all been in there at one point or not as Westmont residents, so...
Old-time customers.
Sad to see them go, but ever-changing market, so...
I know Larry, we work, if you want to come up to the podium, probably, we, I know Larry's been working to keep them open.
CNC Vacuum has, has been a longstanding tenant in our downtown business district, and it's over 42 years, actually. And, and we were talking with Alice, the owner of the business, and we did hit out two other locations that they were looking at, but when they went through the whole process of what it would take to build out the space and so forth, Alice simply said, "I think I'm ready to, well, just call it a business." And we had some hopes her associate might be interested in buying the business. There's still a small probability of that, but it's been looking less than us as we've talked with them. But we were working with them very closely, and I thought we were going to be able to find a new spot for them, but in the end, they decided not to, so...
Great asset.
And Larry, while you're up there, there's some rumor going around that, yeah, no, I'm good, this is the last one.
The rumor starting where?
Sweet and Savory, there's a possibility them relocating back in town?
There, there's not a lease sign, there's not a lease signed yet, but they are looking at a building on South Cass Avenue, so hopefully we'll know shortly, but it's, it's...
Positive.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Sweet and Savory's cake, that's in the...
Yeah, they, again, Danielle from Sweet and Savory provides the sweets, and we ordered our cake from them tonight. If seeing no other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, motion, Addington, second.
Motion made in second to adjourn. I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Again, there's no executive session, so right now, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.